Good evening and welcome to this January 12th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. The Planning Commission is comprised of seven volunteer residents of the city of Bloomington. We have four here this evening, so we do have a quorum. As we begin this evening, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This evening, we have five items on our agenda. On some items, the Planning Commission will make the final decision, while on other items, sometimes the City Council makes the final decision. We have two public hearings tonight. The public is encouraged to provide testimony at public hearings. You can do that here at City Hall, or you can also do that virtually. Mr. Markergard, could you provide some additional information on virtual testimony?
Jared Cookedin, thank you. We have two public hearings this evening, and you can testify here in the chambers, or if you're watching from home, call in to testify. What you would do is call the number on the screen, and then enter in the access code, and then you'll be able to speak to the items tonight. And we will have this number on the screen during the various public hearings tonight.
Very well, thank you. Item number one this evening is from Northwestern Health Sciences University for a privately-initiated code amendment. Ms. O'Day, you have the staff report.
I do. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Item one is for privately-initiated code amendment to create two use definitions and allow them as permitted uses in the R1 zoning district. A little bit about the applicant, Northwest Health Sciences University, is located at 2501 West 84th Street. It's a private university focusing on alternative healthcare education, and they offer programs such as chiropractic, massage therapy, Chinese medicine, et cetera. The total campus size is 264,739 square feet. And then, as a note, I just want to mention that their, the medical office and the retail uses already exist today on campus. I just want to highlight the city code definition for accessory use, because it is important in this application. I highlighted two important components of the definition. The first is that the accessory use cannot exceed 10% of the principal floor area, and the second is that the accessory use cannot attract customers independently of the principal use. The definition of this accessory use limits the medical office and retail uses. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to create two new use definitions. The first is for retail complementary to a college/university, and I'll read the definition before you. It says, "Complementary retail sales uses affiliated with a college or university that do not exceed 5% of the total floor area of the building in which they are located, or 5,000 square feet in floor area, whichever is less." The retail store already exists, as I said, and they are not intending to expand the area. The store size is 4,300 square feet, which is 1.6% of the total campus area. The size complies with their proposed definition. In the store, they would primarily sell wellness-related products such as vitamins, supplements, wellness gifts, equipment, et cetera. And then, for the benefit of the public, this amendment would not allow for a standalone retail use in R1, so this retail must be complementary to and associated, or associated to, a college/university onsite. They would likely have an exterior permanent sign, so a sign permit is required to verify code of compliance. And then, the second definition relates to medical office. As mentioned earlier, accessory uses are limited to 10% of the total floor area, and upon review of their floor plans, the medical office or their public clinics, they exceed 10% of the total floor area. So they currently have three separate clinics totaling a combined area of 29,577 square feet, which comes to a total of 11% of the total campus size. Again, similar to the other definition, the medical office must be associated with a college or university. And then, this would add those two uses to our use table in our city code, so you can see there that I've added them as permitted uses in our use table in R1. And then, lastly, we did receive a piece of correspondence, which I provided to you in an email, and that should be before you at your seats. And then, the applicant is in attendance tonight, should there be any questions. And then, I've provided the motion, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. O'Day. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. One question that I had was, are there other colleges and universities within the city of Bloomington that could potentially utilize this change in conditional use?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Goldsman for asking that. I meant to touch on that during my presentation, so I'm glad you asked. So the two that come to mind at the top of my head are Normandale College and Bethany, Bethany College. Those are the two that come to my mind that are existing colleges and universities in Bloomington, and they could, they could have these uses as well, as long as they meet the size definitions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As a follow-up, how about technical-type training facilities? So, thinking about an example would be, I think there's a beauty school on Lyndale and 96th ish street. Would that not, would that fall under the college and university, or is that a different type of use?
Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, and Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that more relates to an instructional center, which is a separately-defined use in our city code, so they wouldn't be able to have a medical office, or they wouldn't fall under this proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions for staff? All right, it's our understanding the applicant is here. Would you like to speak to the commission? If you would, please step forward. Let us know if there's anything we've missed, or you want us to know. If you could state your name, would be great, and after you're finished, we have a sign-in sheet there for you as well.
Sounds good. Can you hear me?
I think we can.
It's not lit up, so.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Mike Tennyson, I am the Vice President for Clinics and Retail Services at Northwestern, so thank you very much for having us here today, and I'm joined by our President and CEO, Dr. Deborah Bushway. I, you know, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Just a couple of points of clarity, just for the group. The retail store is, it's kind of coexists as a bookstore as well, right? So, we do sell a lot of textbooks out of the store. It services our local community on campus. We have a lot of alumni that use the store, though, that it's easy for them to buy their supplements from our store versus housing a lot of supplements in their actual clinics, and so, which is why, you know, we've obviously been, you know, selling to our alumni. The other piece of clarity I just wanted to point out, too, is on the clinics, there's actually four clinics, but one clinic is kind of within a clinic. But the clinics serve a variety of different populations. Some of the clinics actually are serving internal communities, so they're not actually serving the external market, and some of them are serving the external market. So, I just wanted to make that a point of clarity for people, in case you're wondering about, you know, why we have so many different services and offerings, and so. And then, one point of clarity I just wanted to make, if you did read through the document that came from the concerned citizen about the case, you know, if you go onto Target's actual website, their average store size is about 130,000 square feet, not 40,000 square feet. So, just a point of kind of reference, as a, I'm sure you've all been in a Target before, so just a point of reference, if you haven't been on our campus, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and so I will open that public hearing now. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone coming forward. Mr. Markergard, do we have anyone online who would like to speak to this item?
Jared Cookedin, we have nobody online.
Very well, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and we will move on to discussion.
Thanks, Chair. I think this application is pretty straightforward and pretty focused on a very specific need. I see that, you know, obviously, health and well-being is important for the community, and it's great that we have these resources available to our residents. It's a large campus, and I think as they are, you know, trying to expand their offerings to clients, I think that the facility has enough, you know, space and size, parking looks fine, I don't anticipate lots of traffic. So, in all, I think I'll be very supportive of the application as it stands in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman, for their comments. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo Commissioner Goldsman's remarks regarding this application. Again, fairly straightforward, seems as though this is both a win for the city of Bloomington and a win for the specific university, so I am in support.
Very well. Further comments, or I'd look for a motion. Commissioner McCover.
I also echo the three, in that it gives the opportunity for Northwestern to expand and reach out to others that do need this type of service.
Commissioner Goldsman.
If I may make a motion?
Go ahead.
In case PL2022-240, I move to recommend approval of a privately-initiated city code amendment creating a use definition for college/university complementary retail and college/university complementary medical office, and adding the use as permitted, as a permitted use in the R1 zoning district, thereby amending city code chapters 19 and 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of a privately-initiated city code amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 4-0, and we'll move on to the City Council at their February 6th meeting. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item number two. The city of Bloomington is the applicant. It is for a city code amendment to create a transitional industrial zoning district, and also rezoning a number of parcels. I believe the number is 28. Mr. Ramler Olsen has our staff report this evening. Mr. Ramler Olsen, if you have any jokes while we're getting that loaded up, we would entertain that?
Trying to think of two characters that walked into a bar. No, I apologize, my...
We are a patient group, take your time.
Computer decided to freeze up on me. I can't even...
Yeah, I can chart from here. It might be, and then you just say advanced slide as needed.
Yeah, certainly.
Let's see. Just a second.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, or Commissioners? There we go. Okay, so the proposal before you tonight is a new zoning district. It's actually split up into two parts. Next slide. The first part is to amend the zoning code, specifically chapters 19 and 21, to establish the TI district, to include references, and to describe its features and standards. The second part of the proposal is to rezone 28 lots along the east side of Lyndale Avenue South between 86th and 92nd Streets from General Industry, that's the I-3 district, to this new zoning district, Transitional Industrial, also the TI district. You'll see at the bottom of that some asterisks that, you know, inform you that the proposal will require amendments to the 2040 comp plan, and that's being considered at the February 6th City Council meeting, so just to provide some background and the implications of the proposal. So, next slide. Oh, boy. Okay. Yeah, so this is a snapshot of the timeline. The project kicked off mid-September, that's when we met together as a group and decided on the level of consultation with the residents, and we began, you know, with that in mind, creating an outreach and engagement plan that we implemented in early October. That meant door-to-door, you know, door-knocking on all the businesses within the area that's proposed to be rezoned, to explain the project, and to talk with the business owners, or who was ever there at the time. October 27th, if you remember, there was a study session where we, we had a discussion about the draft version of this new zoning district and the proposal to rezone those 28 lots. I think at that time, actually, it was 25, and as I'll get into it, that was expanded. The next meeting was a study session with City Council on November 14th. There were some discussion items that came out of that, and I'll get into that in a little bit more. Today, we have a public hearing just to hear about the new zoning district and the rezoning, and then, we'll be bringing this to, assuming everything goes well tonight, we'll be bringing to the City Council on February 6th for adoption. So, I showed you that timeline, and it started mid-September, although we could think of it actually going back to April of 2021, that's when the Lyndale Avenue Suburban retrofit plan was adopted. And a project that, actually, an action item that came out of that project, or, yeah, that planning process, was to reconsider the zoning around 86th Street, because it was identified as a node within the plan. And so, this was an outgrowth of that, because it recognized that there was a lot of industrial properties that might compromise some of the redevelopment that was discussed in the plan and planned for. So, next slide. So, with that in mind, we actually relied a lot on that plan, because, you know, there was a good amount of engagement that came out of it, and there was a lot of good information, so it already formed a good basis for which to proceed. And as I said, we selected consult as the appropriate participation level, and with that, we started engaging residents. As I said, we went door-to-door to all the businesses within the area that's proposed to be rezoned, and to explain the project. We also did direct mailings to all the, to all those businesses, and, oh, and I should also mention, we did reach out to those properties that immediately but the, but the area. So, we did include a lot, a lot of, a lot of properties outside of the rezoned area, proposed to be rezoned area. And so, there were a couple instances of direct mailings, there was that, where we went door-to-door, we actually handed out material to explain the project, we actually, and then we did a mailing to those properties, just to follow up and to actually advertise the open houses that were shown the following week. And then, there's the public hearing, so we have made efforts to engage the residents that own property within the area. Next slide. So, at that study session, late October, October 27th, as I mentioned, one item, or one big item that came out of that discussion was consideration of what properties are included within this new district. There was acknowledgement of some properties at 86th and Lyndale that seemed suitable to also be included, and so, that was a total of three properties. They were, they're all owned by, they're all, the same owner, and so, they were brought in that raised the lot, the amount of lots from 25 to 28. And so, that was the big item that came out of there. Otherwise, I think there was a general consensus, or that was staff's interpretation, that was general consensus that it was a good idea to proceed with crafting the zoning district. At the November 14th City Council, City Council Study Session, in addition to discussing the new zoning district and the proposed rezonings, there was a resolution that was adopted that was to initiate the rezoning process. And then, on top of that, there were some other discussion items that were brought up, the council had concerns about, or they just had discussions relating to the relationship between residential and industrial uses within this new zoning district, because we are, as I'll get into in a moment, we are proposing to add residential to the area as, you know, as an allowed use, or a conditional use, I should say. There was also discussion around the district's impacts on the existing industrial within the area. And then, there was also acknowledgement of the pros and cons of the rezoning approach that we're proposing, which is rezoning all 28 lots, as opposed to going lot-by-lot rezoning. So, those were some items that were discussed at that meeting. Next slide. And concerning that discussion about the, you know, the relationship between industrial and residential, it's, there's already evident, I mean, there's already residential within the area that's pretty close by, that's across the street in Lyndale, it's not exactly within, or it's not in, within the proposed area to be rezoned, but there, and there's even newer residential development just south of it, there's Lyndale Flats, and then, what was approved recently, Oxborough Heights, and then, just a little bit south of that, was other residential development, and even north Kitty Corner from the Devani site at 86th and Lyndale, and then just a little bit further north. So, there is already residential encroaching upon this area, and so, it just, it lends itself to that there's a demand that we seem to be witnessing. Next slide. So, with the introduction of this new zoning district, there's a variety of amendments to the zoning code. There's chapter 19, there's just some simple references that need to be inserted to establish the TI district within that particular chapter. In chapter 21, Division E, that's where we actually define the new district, the Transitional Industrial District. We also get into district-specific standards, and some of those standards you might be familiar with, because they were borrowed from other zoning districts that's already been established. And all of this is in effort to, to implement the retrofit plan in creating a pedestrian-friendly area, and that involves certain site standards and building design standards. Division H, which is the uses, we had to, you know, we borrowed heavily, or we based the use list based on the I-3 district, and then, just with some slight permutations, adding districts, modifying some, or adding, sorry, adding uses, modifying some uses and removing some, we set to distinguish the Transitional Industrial District. And the assemblage of those uses really addresses the compatibility between any sort of differences there might be. We get into, you know, moving along in this chart, there's other site design standards, building design standards, setbacks, so structure placement, development intensity, that we had to address within chapter 21. And then, you know, the final amendment to the zoning map to rezone those 28 lots from I-3 to Transitional Industrial. Speaking a little bit further on the use tables that I mentioned, I already mentioned that we are talking, we're proposing to introduce residential, but in limited forms, not single-family residential, that's not appropriate for this area, so multifamily residential is the intended, the intention behind that particular use for this district. We're also proposing retail, indoor recreation, and entertainment, there's been a burgeoning interest in that type of use, and then, cultural amenities, libraries and whatnot, museums. With what we're proposing, we're not creating any non-conformities, so any sort of use that, that isn't appropriate for, for the I-3 district is being carried over for the Transitional Industrial, that includes self-storage, and I believe there's one single-family home within the area that we're speaking about rezoning, so that those, those will remain non-conformities with the establishment of this new district. And we took efforts also to accommodate all current uses, some of the established uses, those that have been established prior to the adoption date, so if it were to be adopted on February 6th, and there was a use that was established prior to then, they could continue as a legal non-conforming use. That's for specific uses, if you'll notice in the, in the, in the use table that came in the packet. And we also prohibit additional sites with uses that are non-aligned with the retrofit plan vision, those are more auto-intense uses, some of those other uses that are more intense and have bigger impacts that might affect the implementation of the Transitional Industrial District. So, next slide. Ah, there we go. Okay. So, this is a table just describing some of the development intensity standards and site characteristics. It compares the current I-3 district with the B4 district. As I mentioned previously, we borrowed a lot of standards from already-established districts, and this just lays out the comparison of how, you know, which standards we borrowed, and how we slightly modified them to fit within the Transitional Industrial District. We're proposing to double FAR, that should be noted. So, again, like, that's to fulfill the vision of the retrofit plan, which sees a more intense type of development along Lyndale, so upping the FAR goes towards that. Actually, well, yeah, next slide. And on this slide, we, it's just a comparison of the setbacks also between the I-3 district and B4. So, again, you can see that we are borrowing some of those setbacks from the B4. One of the recommendations that came out of the retrofit plan was to rezone a lot of properties along Lyndale to B4, so it's just to introduce that compatibility between the TI- it's just to introduce that compatibility between the TI district and, um, what will eventually be, be the B four district in, in surrounding lots along Lyndale Avenue. And, um, it should also be noted. So, uh, that last column, abutting lots that are used and zoned residential, there is a, a distance requirement between, um, uh, those non-residential, um, non-residential uses to re- propose residential. So if residential were to be proposed, it would have to satisfy these distance requirements. Next slide. And this is merely to illustrate the, the building character that could materialize along Lyndale. It was used in, um, the, uh, October 27th presentation. Um, I don't believe buildings are going to be that high, but nonetheless, uh, you can see that some of the features we're proposing are to restrict parking to the side or rear and or rear. Um, we're, we're communicating that buildings can be closer to the street. So to create a more intimate experience between pedestrians and the ground floor and just buildings in general. So again, creating a more pedestrian friendly environment, something that caters to the safety and comfort, comfort of, uh, pedestrians. And we're also, um, requiring, uh, ground floor transparency and activation. Um, a little bit more detail on the activation requirements. Uh, within the use list, we are allowing warehousing uses within the, uh, transitional industrial district. However, those come with requirements that 50% of the linear length of those ground floors be active uses, um, customer interaction, lobby, um, or, or retail, front end retail to some of those warehousing uses if there were to be established after the adoption of the TI district. So that's what's meant by activation. And then transparency, uh, kind of speaks for itself where we'll be requiring some of that transparency along the ground floor again to create a more active pedestrian environment. Uh, next slide. So getting to the rezoning proposal, as I mentioned, it's 28 lots. It's, um, proposed to go from I three to transitional industrial. Um, there's already a mix of industrial automotive, uh, warehouse, office and retail. We want to, you know, it's a, it's a eclectic mix of uses and that's something that in the, within the district itself, we wanted to encourage and, um, maintain. So, uh, you'll see that in the list of uses. Um, some of the surrounding uses again, speak to the compatibility of rezoning, um, to the TI district. As you'll see, there's already retail and industrial to the north. Um, there's commercial to the south. Um, east is just pretty much all industrial. And then some multi-family residential and commercial to the, to the west. So it kind of fits, uh, the pro- proposed rezoning, um, again speaks to that compatibility between those uses. Next slide. And, um, it's also worth mentioning that there, uh, this is also in line with the, um, adopted 2040 comprehensive plan. Within that, uh, document, there was, uh, discussion of the industrial redevelopment strategy that came from, uh, industrial obsolescence study that staff carried out, um, I believe in 2019. And, um, there, from that was the coding of industrial lots, uh, lots that are guided industrial, um, coded or categorized as either protected. And there I provide the definition of what protected means. It's existent, existing industrial uses that are still viable. They should remain zoned for industrial and rezoning should be avoided. And the other category is transitional, um, industrial areas. And those include, um, those have already an existing mix of uses. So it's not strict industrial. And, um, zoning is a possibility or rezoning, zoning changes are a possibility if it's a market-driven plan. And I think that commu- uh, that, that speaks to the, uh, retrofit plan. And, um, it's also depends on the proposed land use relationships, the surrounding land use and consistency with the comprehensive plan, which I've spoken about previously. Next slide. And, uh, so these, uh, this proposed rezoning, uh, again relates to that 86th Street node. The, the node is admittedly a little bit shorter than, uh, meaning it doesn't extend as far south as what we're proposing, but those are all I three properties. And, uh, rezoning to, uh, transitional industrial will again create that compatibility between other, uh, zoning districts along Lyndale in order to implement the retrofit plan. So this is all coming out of that, uh, previous planning effort adopted in 2021. Excellent. So before you are some motions, uh, to approve I, um, the ordinance of establishing the TI district and, uh, or I'm sorry, recommending approval. I'm sorry. Recommending approval of the TI district and recommending approval of the rezoning. And I think with that, I can take any questions you have.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Ramler Olson. We will move on to questions and I'll get us started here. Um, in one of your slides, you had the sort of site characteristics comparison of the new IT zone versus, uh, some of the similar zones we looked at, specifically this slide here. Um, the minimum floor area ratio for TI, uh, we appear to not be setting one, whereas in B four, there's a 0.2 minimum floor area ratio. Was there a consideration of putting minimum floor area ratio for TI?
Uh, Chair Cookton, um, the, the discussion around floor area did primarily focus on the maximum floor area. Uh, we, we carried over that, um, the, the same consideration for the minimum floor area from the existing I three district. So we didn't, it wasn't, uh, it's not a one for one copy from, from the B four district, but we assumed that there would nonetheless be, uh, there would be enough building area to satisfy. And we assume that the, the market, again, consistent with also the building standards we're proposing, would satisfy even the minimum, uh, floor area ratio that you'd find in B four. So that was, I think, believe that, I believe that was some of the thinking that went on while we were establishing the standards for the minimum floor area ratio.
Do you have concerns that any development could come in that would be less than 0.2? Or is there enough other things happening here where that's, that's unlikely?
I think the cons- uh, Commissioner, uh, Chair Cookton, I think the, the concern again is, is alleviated by the design standard we're proposing. Uh, we have other minimum standards, uh, where they have to satisfy. Um, I can't do the math in my head on the spot, but, um, in order to, uh, to, to not exceed point two, I'm, I'm not sure what the minimum bu- building area would be, but if this, uh, floor area ratio is mainly speaking to bulk. So we have other standards that require, uh, for instance, we have, um, building floor area that, you know, we would assume that anyone coming into the district would, would develop and to maximize the site development. But that's something we can certainly reconsider is in, as we're revising the, you know, district standards based on your feedback, is considering a, a minimum floor area, floor area ratio that mimics the B four district.
Very well. Other questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks Chair. Um, if you would mind bringing up the next slide, I had a question about setbacks. Um, so we currently have a minimum setback of 10 feet along the public street. Um, but the maximum is 40. Uh, do we have any concerns about the 40? I, I've seen that, that's quite a large distance from the street. Um, uh, what, what came from, or where did that 40 come from? And, and maybe could you give us some examples of where 39 and a half feet would be appropriate?
Uh, Chair Cookton, Commissioner Goldsman, the 40, that was taken from the B four district, wanting to maintain that compatibility from other B four, uh, lots that will be established along, uh, Lyndale Avenue within the area. So we were merely just bringing that into this district. We limit the area of parking that so much to the, where it can't be established in front of the building, between the building and the street. So, um, that could be either green space, that could be passive space. Um, it could be, I guess, activated, uh, active space if it's for instance, fronting, uh, or re- um, retail or, uh, rest, restaurant establishment. So that's where that conversation came in. I wasn't around when the B four district was established. So I don't know intimately what the, the conversation that fed into the maximum setback of 40 feet. I'd have to defer to the planning manager on that.
Mr. Markergard?
Chair Cookton, Commissioner Goldsman. Yeah, thinking about the B four district, we've seen quite a lot of developments in B four over the years. Uh, we haven't had any that have actually utilized that full 40 feet. As Mr. Ramler Olson said, you could not have parking in that area. So really the only viable use would be, you know, outdoor seating patio, some sort of large landscaped area. Um, so it would probably be surprising to see development that would take advantage of that 40 feet. Um, could happen, but if, if it did happen, it would be some sort of very large outdoor seating area most likely.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramler Olson has a follow-up. You say there can't be parking between the street and the building. Does parking include drive aisles?
Uh, Chair Cookton, it, yeah, I, uh, being more specific, yeah, it does include the drive aisles and parking. So it essentially autom- automobiles would not be allowed within that area.
Mr. Markergard?
Chair Cookton, with one exception, that would be the driveway leading into the parking lot, uh, would be allowed, but not any kind of, uh, circulation drive.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
Actually, uh, Chair Cookton, can I be, and, um, I just want to be a little bit more specific, actually, adding on to, uh, the planning manager's comments. Um, so we are really focusing this district, um, as it fronts along Lyndale and some of the other cross, uh, the streets I cross with it, 86th, 90th, 92nd. There are some lots that are proposed to front, that, that do front on Harriet. And so we do make exceptions for those properties. So in that case, they would be allowed to have drive aisles and parking in between the building and the street on those lots. So I just want to provide even more clarity.
Very well. Further questions for staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Um, the city of Bloomington is the applicant, so we won't hear again from them, but I will see if there's anyone online who would wish to speak to this item?
Chair Cookton, we have nobody online.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. And there's nobody here in the council chambers?
Uh, Chair Cookton, I would note, we did receive one item of correspondence, uh, which you have before you. And, uh, that correspondent is, uh, in favor of the rezoning.
Very well. Thank you for that information. With that, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes four zero. We will move on to discussion. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you Chair. Uh, I appreciate, uh, this coming back so quickly in front of the planning commission. I think it's a good direction for the Lyndale retrofit plan first steps. Um, I appreciate the adding of the additional lots, um, on that 86th Street and Harriet Corner. I think that's a good addition. Um, and I am in support of moving forward on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks Chair. Um, I would say, um, in addition, um, to, uh, Commissioner Albrecht is that I also am, um, in support. I also in addition would like to say I, I like that we didn't add any additional non-conformities. It's a, it's a unique, um, piece of this, um, as well as I allow, or I, I also, I also like that, um, we are making the, the west side of Lyndale consistent or more consistent with the east side of, of Lyndale. Um, I, you know, coming into the study session in October, I didn't realize that the sides of the streets made a difference on what type of business you could do. And I like that now it's, it's a lot more consistent. Um, and I think it's going to drive for a, a more pleasant and, um, approachable thoroughfare through our city. So overall, I think that we've done a great job here in getting our feedback and, and making it a reality. And I'm excited to see what it will do for actual development of, of the Lyndale, uh, retrofit plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Any further comments?
I'll jump in as well and just say I, I like what's being proposed here. I think it was well done. I would definitely like to also appreciate, say I appreciate the public outreach here, the, the very intentional public outreach of the folks on Lyndale. That is important and I'm glad we did that. Um, if we could just take a, a second peek at that minimum floor area ratio thing, if you've looked at it and are intentional about that, I'm fine with it if there's no concerns. If that was maybe something that, you know, one quick second pass at that to make sure that staff is comfortable with it. I'm fine with what staff wants to proceed with there. And I think this is great. I mean, I'm really excited for the future of Lyndale. I think this is an important step in the right direction for what we're going to do there and, and get Lyndale as our, our main streets and, and brought into the, 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 the 21st century, I think is, is terrific. So I'm in support of this and we'll look for a motion. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you Chair. In case PL 2022 dash 249, I move to recommend approval of an ordinance amending chapters 19 and 21, establishing the transition and, and transition industrial zoning district and modifying multiple city code sections to reference the TI zoning district. Second?
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the TI district ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That mash and pass, that motion passes four zero.
If I may.
Commissioner Albrecht?
In case PL 2022 dash 249, I move to recommend approval of an ordinance amending the city's official zoning map to rezone 28 lots along the east side of Lyndale Avenue South between 86th and 92nd Streets as referenced in table three of the staff report from general industry I three to transitional industri- industrial TI. Second?
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of an ordinance amending the city's official zoning map. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That ma- that motion passes four zero. This will proceed to the city council on February 6th. Thank you, Mr. Ramler Olson. We will then move on to item number three. Again, the city of Bloomington is the applicant. This is not a public hearing, rather a study item for the planning commission. Mr. Johnson, you have the staff report for the sign ordinance update.
Thank you Chairman Cookton and, uh, members of the planning commission. Nice to see you this evening. Um, I should note that I also have with me, uh, Assistant City Attorney Kevin Toski. He's going to participate in the, uh, presentation with me and, uh, talk about some legal considerations as they pertain to signage. Um, so let me share my screen here. And we'll get started. Um, so, uh, just a quick agenda slide, um, what we plan to talk about here this evening, um, with respect to signage, uh, and the sign ordinance. We'll ch- talk briefly about, um, some of the background and history, um, about our existing sign ordinance. We'll talk about what the, um, uh, primary goals are that staff have identified in order to make this project successful. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about some of the engagement and research, uh, that staff is, uh, completing in order, uh, to, um, uh, try and be inclusive in our process, but also, um, uh, get the best product and the most kind of modern and effective, uh, signage provisions. Um, uh, Terny Toski, we'll talk about the legal considerations, recent case law, um, so some analysis being done on our existing sign ordinance. Uh, and then we'll get into kind of the more interactive, uh, part of the, um, uh, event this evening. Uh, we actually have some polling equipment. We're going to see how it works. Um, hopefully throw you a curve ball and, uh, use some clickers, uh, to do a little bit of a polling activity. Hopefully it works. We'll see. So what is the sign ordinance? This might be, uh, clear to most of you or all of you, but also for the members of the public. Um, uh, the, the city code has a dedicated article, uh, in our zoning code that deals with everything pertaining to signage. Um, and generally speaking, sign ordinances regulate, uh, expression. They, uh, provide standards and requirements, uh, for all commercial and non-commercial speech, um, uh, that take the form of, uh, signs, of course. Generally speaking, all community sign ordinances represent some type of balance between allowing for more. Generally speaking, all community sign ordinances represent some type of balance between allowing for more or less expression, while also balancing public safety and community aesthetics. So when we talk about safety, certainly in the era of, you know, cell phones, there's a lot of discussion about distracted driving. Well, signs really, it was really the original form of distracted distracted driving in terms of balancing public safety. You know, signs and vision triangles can present a visual obstruction that can present a hazard. So that's one piece of it, but that's not to leave out also community aesthetics. There's communities around the country that have taken a much more aggressive approach to to limiting the amount of signage that they allow. And then there's communities, they're a little bit more permissive in terms of allowing larger amounts of signage. And that's really up to the community's preferences in terms of the aesthetic that they're seeking. And I noted that, I already noted that the sign ordinance is in Article ten of chapter nineteen. One thing I will add about this is that currently in the in chapter nineteen in our older zoning provisions, that billboard standards are actually a separate article outside of the sign ordinance. One of the things that we would contemplate as part of this effort is to bring those things together into one bulk section of standards. Certainly would have separate performance standards for those types of things, but currently they exist outside or separate from one another. So just in terms of the background and history, the last full scale overhaul of the city's sign ordinance was in nineteen ninety six. There's a little bit of an interesting process in that the city appointed several members of a kind of community working group that became, I forget what the 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 name of it is in the staff report, I'm blanking on it right now. But effectively, it had representation for many different types of businesses around the community, some of which did kind of inform or influence some of the standards around some of that signage. So a little bit of an interesting approach to that. Since that time, there has been no full scale comprehensive review of the sign ordinance. However, that's not to say that similar to any ordinance we have, there has always been iterative and ongoing updates to it, either to address certain particular legal considerations or frankly, just as the activities that we're always engaged in is just try to make it better. And also, the public has a role to play in that. Certainly, there has been public interest and feedback about certain aspects of the sign ordinance that have developed over time. And finally, just on that front, I guess, incorporating new signage standards for some of our newer zoning districts. Some of our zoning districts are more modern, some of our mixed use districts. We've had to add to our sign ordinance over time to kind of address those different types of zoning districts and development types. So as staff goes through and works to update our sign ordinance, we're certainly going to seek a lot of feedback from you and the city council about what your policy preferences are on certain various questions that'll inform the draft, new sign ordinance. But as we got, as we've kind of gone through this, we've gone through an extensive preliminary process on the staff end of things, identifying, okay, what are the problems? Where do we really need to fix things? And what are really our goals for this project? And what 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 all of those discussions boil down to is that there's three primary goals. A, there's been some really significant case law in the last few years that Kevin Toski will talk about here in a minute. And then we need to really pull our sign ordinance into conformance with those current legal standards. He'll talk about that. The second important goal for this project is really to improve the clarity and reduce the complexity of our current sign ordinance. It's not an uncommon occasion. If you come to Civic Plaza, you find, you see planning staff in a conference room somewhere having a lively debate. Sometimes it's about a certain provision of the sign ordinance that that we can't seem to agree on for whatever reason. So there are instances where there's just a little bit of too much going on in the side ordinance that makes it a little bit too complex. So we just do definitely want to make it as clear as possible. And then just improving the organization and formatting of it, this, you know, certainly not everyday residents are always in our sign ordinance. It's mostly staff and sign installers, let's be honest, but in businesses and things along those lines. But we're in it, we're in it every day, so we'd like it to to function a little bit better. And I know members of the public who do use it would appreciate that as well. Currently, the way the existing sign ordinance is set up is just there's a lot of redundant lists of performance standards. So it's quite lengthy, and there's a lot of ways to to integrate tables, to integrate figures that could be a much better means to communicate these regulatory standards. So that would be the third primary goal. If we, so as we kind of evaluate different questions that we encounter as we think about our new standards, we kind of want to continue to refer back to these three goals. Is it reducing complexity? Is it more, is it better organized? And is it conformance with current legal standards? Those are questions we're going to continually ask ourselves as we evaluate kind of the direction that we take this. So in terms of an anticipated timeline, we've been doing research engagement primarily over the fall here and into the early winter. We've scheduled these study sessions now that we feel like we're at a decent place to get some more focused feedback from you and the city council about some policy preference questions. Once following those study sessions, then we'll take the the winter here to draft our new sign ordinance in draft form, of course. And at some point, possibly in the the late spring, maybe getting into early summer, we would consider scheduling some public hearings. It's a little bit undetermined what additional study sessions might be appropriate with the draft ordinance in place. We're still evaluating that. But that's certainly something we can report back on. But this just gives you kind of a rough timeline of what we would be looking at in terms of our current process. So with that, I will turn it over to Kevin Toski, and he can talk about signs and the law.
Good evening, Chair and members. My name is Kevin Toski. As you know, I'm an Assistant City Attorney. I work with planning and the rest of the community development department. Yeah, just kind of a legal introduction. I think most cities around the country regulate signage through their their land use and zoning codes. It's kind of the easiest way to do it. But what that does is introduces kind of more complexity, obviously, because Nick talked about what signage is, is part of it is expression. So you have First Amendment considerations because the government, the city, is doing regulating of the possibly a message or expressive activity, some of which is protected by the First Amendment. So it does get a little complex. There has been a couple cases over the past seven years or so that have kind of shook the signage world and sent a lot of cities scrambling to take a look at their zoning code or their sign codes again, just for conformance with what the Supreme Court was saying. So we had Reed versus Town of Gilbert was in twenty fifteen. What that case said was that if your sign ordinance differentiates between signs based on the message or the content, basically, if you have to read the sign to determine how it's regulated, that's going to be a major First Amendment problem. And the court will, in ninety nine percent of the cases, strike that ordinance down if it if it refer, does any regulation based on the content of a sign. So that was Reed versus Town of Gilbert. What you saw in the past was that a lot of cities would just define, say, a political sign as sane X, Y, and Z. Going forward, that's going to be a problem after Reed versus Town of Gilbert. So that's why a lot of cities went back to their drawing board. Bloomington has done some piecemeal kind of ordinance updates since twenty fifteen to kind of deal with that. But like Nick talked about, this is our comprehensive review of that. So moving on, just last year was the city of Austin versus Reagan Outdoor Advertising, which was a case involving billboards in the city of Austin, Texas. And the the Supreme Court in that case said that an off premise versus on premise distinction is still valid, and it's it's not content based. So what Austin did, similar to what we do in Bloomington, is that any new billboard is prohibited, and any expansion of a billboard has to come into consider, conformance with current sign standards, similar to what we do here. And the court said, yeah, that's fine. That's judged under kind of a lesser, a lesser constitutional test than content based regulation. So that was good news for cities around the country. So those are kind of the two big cases that we're dealing with over the last few years. Like I said, we've done some updating, but this is a good chance to do a full kind of comprehensive update to make sure we're doing as much as we can to minimize our city's risk legally. So, so what we're doing with this case is we had some money set aside for working with outside counsel on this. So we're working with the Green Espa law firm. One of their attorneys, John Baker, who I've kind of met through just city attorney stuff in Minnesota, is kind of a national expert on signage and land use cases. He litigates and advises cities around the country on land use issues and has done a number of presentations and kind of manuals on sign code updates for other cities and states. So we're working with him, and I've kind of went through and kind of looked for problems in our code and kind of done some preliminary work on the legal end. Then what we'll talk about tonight is more of a policy issue, so kind of the direction we want to go. You know, what do you want far, as far as sign signage? How is it calculated, that type of thing? Whereas I was looking at, say, you know, making sure our con, our signs aren't content based, how our nonconformity is going to be treated? How do we do sign code variances, those type of more meaty legal issues of what I've been looking at? So we kind of have a good base of reference now, and we're ready to kind of move into the next phase of the project. Just kind of a summary of kind of the First Amendment issues that we want to look at with sign codes is that, A, so the First Amendment does apply. We'll have to be, you know, it'll it'll inform all our decision making going forward on sign regulation. And then number two is that you don't want to favor any noncommercial speech or favor any commercial speech over noncommercial speech. So we're looking for instances of that in our code. We have a section that exempts certain categories of signage from permitting regulations. So that that's kind of a source where that where that problem can come up, you know? If you're exempting certain types of signage, whereas other signage requires a permit, there's a potential for some for some issues there. So what we really want to do is is make sure that we're regulating signage based on kind of what's happening on the property rather than what's happening on the sign. And so I guess basically, we're just trying to go through and and kind of apply those principles throughout our code. So we can kind of have a good base of what we're doing now. And then, like I said, Nick and and we'll get some feedback from you tonight about how we want to do policy wise with, you know, setbacks, sign sizes, how is it calculated and that type of stuff. Those regulations are always viewed under kind of a lesser constitutional threshold or test were we to be challenged? So as long as there's a justification for those regulations, then it should hold up in court. So I'll be around for any questions after that, but that just kinds of gives you a summary of the the legal considerations and how we're addressing those. So back to Nick.
Thank you, Kevin. Chair Cookden, I would actually recommend, if there's any questions about the legal side of it, I would even recommend, just before the polling type activity happens, if there's any questions for Kevin, maybe do that now or just pause.
Very well. Any questions for Mr. Toski?
Okay, good to go. All right. Thank you, Kevin. So moving forward, just a kind of a note about some of the engagement we've done and some of the research that we're performing. So engagement around sign ordinances can be a little bit odd or outside the norm of, as I said earlier, that it it kind of is a topic that represents a very specific and focused group of people, whether it be businesses or sign installers, certainly staff is part of that, too. But in terms of the outreach we've done to done to date, so one of the things that we did is that we cured a list of all the parties who've been issued a sign permit at the city of Bloomington in the last five years, and that turned out being a hundred and thirteen different parties. So we sent them a sign ordinance survey, trying to get a an understanding of, you know, is this really more of an internal staff perception? Some of the challenges that we that we perceive, or is it something that's widely viewed out in kind of the signage community? Unfortunately, only six people per completed the survey. The results surprised us a little bit. They were kind of demonstrating a certain level of satisfaction with Bloomington's sign ordinance. If I had to guess what that's about, I think that's more reflective of the fact that many cities need to update their sign ordinances and that many cities' sign ordinances are kind of a redundant list of never ending standards. That's my guess. But some did, some did present some interesting ideas for us to consider as we draft our sign ordinances. For example, some cities exempt face changes in terms of doing sign permits. I'm not, I certainly wouldn't commit one way or the other of that here, but just, you know, they presented some interesting ideas in some of their comments. We'll take that into account. Another thing we did is that we did send a survey out to thirty metro cities or thirty kind of peer communities here in the Twin Cities metro area. And really, what we were identifying with that one is trying to answer some really key, specific policy questions that relate to the Bloomington ordinance, as well as get a sense of what communities have recently updated their signage standards in a more comprehensive way. And then specifically asking the staffs of those organizations how they view the effectiveness of their sign ordinance. So we wouldn't want to be pulling from sign ordinances or pulling ideas or referencing them from a research and analysis standpoint if they're not well, not well viewed by their own staff who implement them. So that was helpful in that regard, and we did get fourteen responses on that. So that did provide us some good data. In terms of other types of outreach, we have shared kind of what we're doing with local representatives of the business community. Some of them are more targeted. The Bloomington Chamber, while technically, I think, still active, has gone some through some transitions of leadership recently, and I think does have more of an affiliation with the Minneapolis Chamber of Commerce. So I think we need to do a little bit more outreach in that regard. But we have spoken with some general landowners and business owners that we encounter through other activities and planning, just to let them know that we're going through this process. In addition to that, we did, we did a table at the Bloomington Farmers Market. No one wanted to talk to me about the sign ordinance, so it was a little disappointing or expected, I don't know which. But yeah, so that that's some of the outreach we've done in terms of the the research that we're doing. So certainly, there is a whole assortment of kind of best practice and best concept research out there around sign ordinances, and we're certainly collecting that. In fact, John Baker recommended, had some good recommendations for us in that regard. In addition to that, we're also studying and researching sign ordinances from other local and national jurisdictions that are viewed with a high level of effectiveness and legal conformity to today's standards. So it's kind of a collection of, you know, there there is model ordinances out there. I'd put that more in the best practices and concepts category, and then it's identifying cities that are more, that have some similarities to Bloomington, but also have a recently updated and effective sign ordinance. So that kind of gives you the flavor of how we're pulling some of our ideas and standards. So for, now we're kind of moving it more into the interactive part of the presentation. So we're going to ask, I forget, is it fourteen or eleven? I forget the number of questions it was. Yeah, that sounds right. But we've got a number of questions around these different topics that we're seeking feedback from. And in order to get that feedback, we certainly can discuss things and answer questions back and forth. And I'll try and provide a kind of a summary level explanation of what we're looking for and what the topic really calls for as we go through it. But we're going to try this polling activity using using some equipment called Turning Point. It's it's equipment that the city has had for a while. Recently, the use of virtual meeting environments kind of went away from that. But now, of course, we're all back in person, so we thought we'd get it, kind of dust off the cobwebs of it and see if it will work. So the the, there is a picture on the slide of what the clicker looks like. Basically, all the buttons are either numerical or letters. All the polls that we'll have for you this evening are letter buttons. What you're going to watch for is that on my slide, there'll be a small toolbar, which I have in the center of the slide, up in the top right portion of the screen. And it has that small polling button on the far right hand of it. It'll either say poll close or poll open. The poll closes in red and the poll open is in green, so when it's green, it means that we can, we can collect your results. The results are funnel into a receiver that'll be plugged into my computer here, and we'll pass them out. So when you're trying to report your results, kind of aim it at my computer, my computer, if you can. And now we'll pass them out.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Please be anonymous.
This is anonymous, yes. You, there's no signature in terms of the clicker that you're going to be using. We won't know what your particular answer is, although we have is the four results. Yeah. Thanks for that question, though.
And may I ask, how are you planning to use the information you collect from us? Is it a hard, hard data collection, or is it more informative in nature? I mean, there's only four of us. I can't imagine you're making decisions based off of the four of us.
Yeah, that, Chair Cookden, that's a good question. So in in combination with you and the city council, that'll bump up the numbers a little bit. And if it's something that it's can becomes more of a tie vote scenario, then I think it might solicit some conversation and discussion about why those, why that is and why, you know, what's informing the kind of preferences that are at play. So that's part of that. So I I don't want to say it's just. So that's part of that. Um, so I, I don't want to say it's just the raw numbers, but we want to get the right, uh, directionally speaking, uh, kind of make sure that we're going in, uh, the right direction that honors the, um, outcomes of the PC and council.
Very well.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm like, those are all live then?
Ready to go. Okay. So what we're going to do to see if this actually works, and I, I should mention if, if it does, if the equipment does not work, uh, we're going to have you fill out a piece of paper. So much less exciting. Or for maybe, I don't know if the, maybe we'll raise hands just so everyone can, and maybe that would not be anonymous. So that would be a bummer. But, uh, so there is a backup plan. Hopefully this works. Uh, but here is our first, uh, test poll catch question. So now the poll is open. Um, uh, you can, uh, press your response. If you point it at my computer over here, and I've got one response, uh, three, still waiting on one. Okay. So, uh, four responses. Uh, what is your favorite mode of transportation? I know what I would pick, but I, we'll see what you say. Oops. Oh, no. Let's do that one more time. I should have mentioned too, is that, um, uh, let's start this over here. Can one of you actually press the buttons, uh, at me? I'm sure this is enthralling television right now. Let me try and restart the poll. Okay, Chair Cook, and could you press one button at, click a button at me? See if this works. There we go. Okay. Now it's live again and did record your vote. You can change your response too in the middle. So I won't jump the gun this time. My apologies. Just takes a minute after we advance. So three, 75% of you, uh, bike is your favorite mode of, uh, transportation. That's mine too. That's what I would have said. Um, so that's just a test. That has nothing to do with science, uh, for the record. Okay. So getting, so now that we know that this works, um, we're going to actually get into the, uh, uh, get into the actual questions that we're interested in, um, uh, learning from you. And so, uh, the first question we want to ask is, uh, just in terms of your own, uh, perception, uh, traveling through the city of Bloomington. Um, just, just so everyone's aware, so freestanding signs includes ground signs, monument signs, uh, pylon signs. Uh, the range of, uh, sign allowance from a size standpoint in the city of Bloomington ranges significantly. Um, it's determined by whichever sign district you're in, which is tied to the underlying zoning and allowed land uses. So for example, residential sites are going to have much lower allowances for, uh, freestanding signs and wall signs, uh, or building signs for that matter, uh, than our commercial sites. And I would also note that, um, in some of our commercial sites, actually having proximity to Interstate 494 or 35W or Highway 77, that also does inform, uh, increases in a, a allowed sign size. So the first question we want to ask specifically about freestanding signs, um, is just about your perceptions, uh, about how the current Bloomington sign ordinance is operating now. And while we might talk about, uh, different methodologies to calculate, uh, allowed signage, uh, for, um, uh, well, more specifically for building signs, but we're really getting at here is, um, is the existing kind of condition, uh, working well for the city of Bloomington? So, uh, with that, um, the poll is open. So are, uh, are the existing signs, freestanding signs in Bloomington, uh, too small, just right, or too large? Okay. So, uh, we're getting some consistency or consensus there. So the next question, moving on to building signs. Currently, the existing Bloomington sign ordinance regulates, uh, building signs by the specific type of sign that is, with the exception of wall and projecting signs have some cross appeal. But with the, uh, other than that, there are, uh, there are several different building, uh, um, sign types in the Bloomington sign ordinance. There's wall signs, there's awning signs, there's canopy signs, there's portico share signs. There are separate allowances for entrance signs, uh, in different sign districts and different uses. So again, as we kind of go through these questions, think about those three goals that I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Uh, one of our goals is really to reduce complexity, uh, kind of eliminate, um, uh, so much of the redundancy and, um, uh, that, that is occurring there. And so our question with respect to this is should we, uh, create an overall allowance, uh, for building signs per, uh, building elevation or per frontage? Or, uh, does the, the planning commission and council, uh, appreciate or prefer the current situation, which is having, uh, dedicated allowances by sign type? So that's the question.
Mr. Johnson, can you explain the word allowance?
Allowance is so, uh, every wall, uh, every building in, in Bloomington, uh, depending on, uh, the use, depending on the sign district that it's in, again, which is tied to zoning. I didn't talk about sign districts a lot. It was in the report. If you want me, I can talk about sign districts. Uh, I might have to if I keep referencing it here this evening, but, um, uh, allowance is the size of the sign, the square footage. Your ex, ex-business is allowed to have 200 square feet on a given building elevation. Uh, that's kind of the pot by which they're, uh, erecting wall signs. And I would, I would note one thing we, uh, as you kind of think about, as we think about, uh, sign sizes, um, it's kind of, uh, it's not frequent that businesses maximize their full allowance according to our existing ordinance, but that's something we'll think about when we, uh, draft our standards. So, um, so in other words, on this one, just should the new ordinance just, uh, have, uh, building si- signage more generically? Uh, or should we continue to, um, have separate allowances by type? And the poll is not opened on this one. Maybe I waited too long. Okay, the poll's open now. Forgive me. Okay, 75, 25. Okay, we'll keep that in mind. Then this next question has to do with how we calculate, uh, building sign area. So currently the sign ordinance, uh, calculates, this, this is most specifically utilized for wall signs. But our wall signage allowances, um, uh, Chair Cook did ask that question before, what is an allowance? It's really the size of the sign and, um, uh, what is it calculated based on? Currently, it's calculated, calculated based on wall area up to a maximum level of height. Many other sign ordinances, uh, calculate, calculate it based on linear frontage, uh, or the linear length of the building wall, as opposed to doing an area. One of the challenges with doing a, uh, calculating it by, uh, a percentage of, uh, wall area is that oftentimes buildings are obviously, uh, in not uniformly shaped in any given one way. Here is an example where this, uh, particular property actually has, um, uh, wow, my brain has gone blank. What is the sign band on top, Glenn? Help me out for a second. The, the decorative, uh, piece above the roof line?
Parapet.
Parapet. Thank you. Wow. Uh, must've been a long week. Thank you. So here is an example where, uh, some of these decorative parapets actually artificially create more, uh, sign wall area for a building in addition to create some interesting measurement, uh, considerations. It's not as if staff doesn't have the ability and the, um, technology to accurately calculate these types of areas. It just adds a li- a little bit layer of complexity, uh, that, um, uh, makes it a little more, uh, complex than necessary. In addition to that, what I would say is that in the situation that we get a lot often, very often the case is multi-tenant retail centers. If, uh, oftentimes it's very easy to dig up the drawings from the building, uh, with respect to linear, uh, tenant frontage, as opposed to having full architectural drawings of a building. So it's a little bit easier for the sign installer and for the business owner, uh, to kind of know what their allowance is going into it. It reduces some of that friction, that regulatory friction on the front end. Um, so the question here would be is if there is, uh, some, uh, consent or, um, uh, perspective about, um, how we should, uh, calculate our sign areas. And so it would be using a linear, um, uh, frontage as opposed to the area, and it's a yes or no question.
Quick question before we move. Can we go back to the picture?
Yeah, you bet.
What if this building is three stories tall versus just this proportional, you know, what was it called?
Parapet.
Parapet, thank you. I'm just thinking, do you take in height into account or are you saying height doesn't matter here?
We, we do, Chair Cook and Commissioner Goldsman, we do, uh, the height does matter, um, but we cap it. So the existing sign ordinance is capped at 25 feet. So when you calculate a wall area for the purposes of the allowance of the amount of signage, it's the linear, uh, frontage. Say it's a 60-foot tall building, we would still cap it at 25 feet. And so it's, it would be, um, uh, you know, whatever the length of the building is times 25, uh, at that instance. So we do cap it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to clarify that discussion. So the proposal though is to get rid of that height component of it.
Correct. Correct. And i- if, and, um, uh, let me back up a little bit to explain that a little bit further before you answer the question. And what that, what, what that would mean is that there would also be a multiplication factor. So the way that the existing sign ordinance uses wall area is it multiplies it by a percentage, uh, depending on how much signage is allowed in that particular sign district. So 4% of wall area can be your sign, 8%, uh, whatever the case may be. What a linear frontage factor does is it, it also has a multiplication factor, usually like one-to-one. So one, you get one, uh, for every foot of frontage you get, you get a square foot of signage. For example, you had a 40-foot long building, you'd get 40 square feet. In a high inten- in a more intense type of district, you might, it might be 1.5 times the linear frontage or two times even in a very, uh, kind of, um, uh, commercial heavy type district. So those factors, there is, so similar to wall area, there's also a multiplication factor. And that's what, that's what becomes the lever by which you decide how much signage, uh, a property is allowed. Say in a residential area, um, uh, you, you know, you might not even use linear frontage, but if you did, you would make that multiplication factor quite small, like 0.5 or 0.25, whatever the case may be. So just an idea there. The poll's open. Um, uh, looking just for confirmation that linear building, uh, tenant frontage is a, uh, good direction to go in. Okay, four responses. Sounds good. This one is sign construction. So this one, um, this one has a little bit more, uh, clear visual and aesthetic, uh, consideration. So I feel like this one is a good one to ask, uh, the public kind of their perspectives on, um, and get some good feedback from, uh, planning commission and council. So there's two basics, uh, types of, uh, building signs. There's cabinet signs, uh, which is usually like a rigid geometric shape that's backlit typically. Uh, the, the sign on the bottom part of the slide, the Best Friends Animal Hospital, that's an example of a cabinet sign. Uh, and the other form of, uh, typical wall or building sign would be what's called channel, uh, letter construction type sign. And those are individual cut letters that also have, typically they're lit, they're not always lit. Uh, but they are, that, as you can see in Grand Szechuan, for example, or in GNC and the other, the top portion of the slide, those are individually cut letters that are mounted on a, a sign band. And so that, that kind of gives you an idea. So currently the Bloomington sign ordinance does not allow a mixing of these sign types on the same wall or the same building. There is a prohibition against mixing cabinet, uh, and channel letter signs. Um, we do have some non-conforming situations in the community. But so here on the slide, we have three examples. You have a channel-only, uh, um, uh, situation, a cabinet sign situation on the, the top right. Both of those would be permitted by code. And then on the bottom portion of the slide, you see a situation that is currently non-conforming, uh, legally so, uh, but is non-conforming. And so one of the questions we, uh, kind of want to, um, uh, want to, to key into is whether or not a mixing of sign types, uh, is an acceptable, uh, arrangement in the future sign ordinance. Couple of things to think about. Really, this is really more, um, of an aesthetic consideration versus more of a kind of property owner preference, um, uh, type situation. One thing to think about, channel cut, and I don't think this should drive the bus on this necessarily, but channel letter signs are, tend to be more expensive than cabinet signs. So there is maybe an equity component, uh, to that. But really what we're getting is oftentimes a particular business that moves into a multi-tenant center has a sign that they have implemented elsewhere or want to utilize. And in some cases, because the pattern of the existing building is already either one or the other, channel or cabinet, they can't, uh, implement the sign, uh, that they desire. Some, on the property owner's side of things, I would say that it's very mixed. Some property owners are very, have, do have strong preferences about that. And in that case, there still is that private interaction between them. The property owner is still going to be able to dictate in some cases, uh, what type of sign, um, they erect. Uh, but there are property owners also who, who don't have strong preferences in that regard and are more focused on just getting the tenant moved in and operating. So, um, with that, the question here, uh, before you is should both cabinet and channel letter sign types be allowed on the same building, uh, or elevation? So getting a sense of that preference. Did I jump the gun again? Okay, the poll's open. Okay. Sounds good. Continuity. So, uh, moving forward, uh, use-based signage. This is, um, um, this only relates to a, a few distinct uses in Bloomington, but I, as I was sharing with you before about kind of some of the history, not that all of the special use, uh, signage provisions in the existing ordinance, uh, were based on kind of the community working group that worked on it. Some of them may or may not have been, uh, but, um, one of the things that the Bloomington sign ordinance has is special standards for special uses. Gas stations, hotels, office towers, high-usage parks. Colleges and universities, uh, require that as well. So, um, uh, again, thinking about reducing complexity, reducing, um, uh, um, some of the, um, um, nuance between this, we're, we're, it would be our preference to try and eliminate some of these special use signs. We want to make sure that that's in line with, uh, planning commission and council, um, uh, desires and goals. Um, I'm happy to discuss it more if, uh, if need be, but the poll is open on this one as well. So the question would be, can we, should we eliminate use-based signs where feasible? And we still need to do some evaluation on our end on which ones, uh, we think can be eliminated. Okay. Thank you. The next, uh, topics, we're going to have four questions on electronic signs. These are very popular, um, signage discussions. And so, um, in many different communities, they simply refer to these sign types as electronic signs or dynamic signs. Some communities do break out the different types of electronic or dynamic signs, and Bloomington happens to be one of those communities. Uh, in our sign ordinance, we have them broken out based on, uh, changeable copy type signs versus graphic signs. There are also, uh, video signs. Those are subject to separate standards. Um, I don't have slides prepared to that. I certainly can discuss those standards if you like. But really what we're going to focus on the next couple of slides are these changeable copy versus graphic signs. And so the first question would be, um, and I feel like some of these questions are interrelated, so there's not a perfect order to do them in, but maybe we can kind of have a roundup discussion about, uh, these next couple of questions at the end. But, uh, the question in this case, um, is should the city maintain two distinct types of electronic signs? And before we do the poll, I want to emphasize that the reason that, uh, some cities differentiate them is that the visual impact of these sign types is more with graphic type signs versus changeable copy. Changeable copy, simply a, a dark background with text typically. So, um, poll question, should multiple electronic sign types be maintained in our future sign ordinance? Poll's open. Everyone's getting fast at putting in their preferences. That's great. So, uh, preference is more towards no in this category. We'll talk about it more at the end. Should electronic graphic display signs be allowed in residential districts? So currently the only types of electronic signs allowed, um, at your place of assembly, at your city park, uh, sites that are zoned R1 are the changeable copy signs. The graphics type signs currently are not allowed, um, per the sign ordinance. And one of the questions, uh, would be is, um, uh, whether it be subject to standards or not, what, should there be allowances for, uh, graphic signs in, uh, in our residential districts? One thing I will share about these sign types, that as the technology continues to improve, the signs are also becoming a little bit more, uh, affordable from a price point standpoint. You know, with like Daktronics and other types of technologies. Now, uh, previously there was more, uh, uh, more, more in the guts of a sign in order to make it a graphic signs. Nowadays, with way the technology is going, uh, it's pretty simple to trans, uh, any sign that can do changeable copy in many cases can also do graphics. That's kind of the direction, uh, that some of it is going. But that being said, you know, uh, again, thinking about visual impact, should these sign types with graphics be allowed in residential districts? So that's the, um, that is the question here. Great. Split on that one. Okay. Sounds good. So the next one has to do with, um, an issue surrounding, uh, public safety and kind of traveling safety. There, there is also some aesthetic considerations here, uh, but one of the key regulatory factors in electronic signs has to do with static dwell time. And the reason being is that, uh, what it really, uh, means is the frequency at which the sign face is changing, um, on these electronic signs. In the case of changeable copy, it's just simply a message. In the change of graphics, it's a changing, uh, image that can go quite quickly. Uh, the city standards are that changeable copy signs can change every eight seconds. Uh, for graphics, it's a- For graphics, it's a, a static dwell time of 20 minutes. In terms of what's happening out in the Twin Cities, I've done less research about this topic nationally, but in the Twin Cities, the range is actually pretty staggering how disparate or how varied it is. You'll see some cities with standards and actually the seconds for graphics. And they maybe, most likely in those cases, have just one type of electronic sign. On the flip side of that, there is actually communities that have static dwell times of an hour, that you can't change a message more than one time per hour. So that gives you a pretty wide range to kind of live in. The, the question that we have before you this evening, and this has a little bit to do with kind of the existing scenario for the city of Bloomington is eight seconds for changeable copy. If you were to go to a, one of the considerations for going to just one type of electronic sign from a regulatory perspective is that that would make it difficult for you then to kind of differentiate between those two sign types from a static dwell time perspective. So something to think about. But basically, the question we want you to answer here is should we retain our existing dwell time standards? Or should we reduce dwell time for graphic display signs? So that's the question, A or B in that respect. Thank you. Okay, retain the current standard, sounds good. So in researching some other communities as well, there's some components that the city of Bloomington does not, is not currently actively included in the Bloomington sign ordinance. In some communities, they do have size restrictions in terms of the size of electronic sign they can have. That might be a proportionality test, like it can only be 50% of the max sign size. Or it can, or it might just be a flat number. Like in this district, the largest electronic sign you can have is 50 square feet, for example. So there's different ways to do it. Bloomington doesn't currently have a size restriction. Your allowance for electronic signage just mirrors that of which your, either your freestanding sign or your wall sign can be swapped out. The other thing to consider is operation time restriction. And what that really, where I've seen that and what that really means fundamentally is turn it off at night, turn it off between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And where I most often see that is when a sign is in close proximity to residential uses, basically. Senior Planner, Landell P., has informed me that actually under some state energy code and other, other codes, they're actually supposed to be doing that anyway. But because that's not a city ordinance, it would be something to contemplate if that were a standard, particularly in proximity to residential uses. If that's something that we found to be important, it might be worth something adding to the zoning code. The only flip side or challenge associated with that is that anything you're going to put in the city code, you better be willing to enforce it against. And typically, that involves nighttime inspections. So that, that is a consideration there. But some cities are doing it, and it's something to consider. So with this one, I didn't update this slide. There's actually four choices here on this one. You could do a size restriction, you could do an operational time restriction if you wanted to add that, you could do both A and B, or you could do no additional restrictions. So four options to pick from here, and the poll is open. Thank you. Okay, sounds good, and we're, we're getting these down here. So this one might be a little bit, kind of staff being in its own head a little bit potentially. We'll see how, kind of how much the public keys into this one. But right now, currently, we have what's called the Uniform Sign Design Process in Bloomington. And some cities have a similar type approval process, some do not. What it really is, is it deals with signage on multi-tenant buildings, most commonly, in terms of basically dedicating what the signage allowance is for a particular tenant space, what the sign construction is going to be. You know, some of them dating back to the 70s and 80s. And Bloomington even specify fonts and letter sizes, like they can be very specific. And they don't have to be from a regulatory perspective, but that's just some of the things we see. And then, so it's multi-tenant buildings, it's developments with multiple building, multiple primary buildings that the signage has to match on multiple primary buildings. There is also some special use signage regulations, like hotels and car dealers, that have to get a USD per our code. So again, just thinking about trying to reduce complexity, make things a little bit more streamlined. It does require a land use approval, so as, you know, kind of similar to getting a sign permit, but more similar to getting a zoning administrative approval. Someone has to submit a uniform sign design, either a new one or an amendment from, through the planning and zoning department prior to them getting their sign permit. So just to give you an idea of like, kind of the administrative steps that are necessary. So with this particular process, hopefully I didn't convolute that too much or just talk a bunch of gibberish. But basically, we're asking for three potential scenarios. One would be to remove or eliminate USDs as a process. Multi-tenant buildings would simply be regulated by their linear frontage or their wall area, whatever ultimately we select in that regard. And, and that would kind of be it. You could make USDs an optional process, which would give the property owner some flexibility to kind of move signage allowances on a particular building elevation around a little bit and kind of distribute that. If they had like a keystone tenant that was important on like a corner cap, for example, it might be something of interest to certain property owners. We do have some who like our process now. That's probably not the majority position, but some do kind of like, like the fact that we have it. And then the third option would just be to maintain the existing structure and system as is. So really, you're talking about elimination, kind of an optional process, or a maintain the existing status quo. Okay, the poll is open. This is really fun, isn't it? Okay. Sounds good, optional, okay. And one, one vote for removal. So this is kind of a fun topic. One of the things that we want to do, or I should say, the, the Creative Placemaking Commission is strongly behind, is you know, they've obviously been doing a lot of art installations around Bloomington. And one of the issues that's kind of cropped up around murals is that there are, it's not within the sign ordinance, but there's other cities, city code standards, particularly around exterior materials, that really limit or preclude the installation of murals on buildings. If you notice, a lot of the mural installations around town have been done on screening walls, on the highway over ramp, on a few other sites. City Hall certainly has one, but that's kind of the exception, not the common. And the, the way our exterior material standards look at it is a secondary material currently, that you can't paint directly on a primary material. And so what this next question really is asking, it's, it's a very general question. It's should staff basically pursue some city code amendments and the adoption of a murals policy in order to facilitate or make it a little bit easier, easier from a regulatory standpoint to install murals? So really, it's just, do you want more murals or not? I mean, let's boil it down. Poll is open. And the responses are in. Okay, sounds good. One of the cases that Kevin talked about was the Austin case that was decided recently, and that the critical element of that is off-premise signage. And so billboards, new billboards are currently prohibited in Bloomington. A lot of that is on the basis of aesthetic considerations, but also those unto their definition are off-premises signs. You know, no one is erecting a billboard for where their business is already located. It's always a traveling advertisement or message of expression typically. So the, the question that we would ask around billboards is, is either A, return our current standards as they exist, which is for the most part a prohibition; B, to allow additional billboards subject to standards; or C, consider opening selected areas of the community only to additional billboards? So those are the three options that we would suggest in this particular case. The poll is open. Y'all are getting very fast at this, thank you. So it's either retain the prohibition or consider, consider selected areas. And we can talk, we can discuss any one of these topics. It's at your discretion, it's your meeting. So that's kind of the end of the polling exercise. Thank you for participating in that. I don't know how smooth that went or didn't go. But at least it's a way to kind of everyone get their voice in in kind of a more expedited, efficient manner. I'm happy to take questions about all the things we talked about. You might have some questions or discussion items about it. In terms of next steps, we're really getting heavy in the drafting and writing mode. So at some point, we're going to have, we, I mean, Assistant Attorney Toski, excuse me, has already done quite a bit of drafting on some of these legal components of it. We have concepts on, on the policy side, but we wanted to touch base with our boards and commissions first to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Questions for staff? I do have a question about sign districts, and I, if I'm recalling the staff report correctly, some sign districts require channel letter signs instead of cabinet signs. Is, is that correct? And is that being proposed to be carried forward?
Yeah, thanks Chair Cookden. I believe that is required in our mixed-use districts. That would be our Class 5 sign district. But I'd have, I'd have to get back down that to be absolutely certain.
That's fine. And these sign districts, are they geographic or are they parcel by parcel? Or how does that work?
Yeah, thanks for that question. They're not geographic, that what they are based, they're tied to is the base zoning of every single property. So each sign district, with the exception of two, two of our sign districts are one zoning district only sign districts. One is for the Mall of America, CX 2, and one is for the HXR District, which is a Bloomington Central Station standard. And so one thing I didn't talk about tonight, but specific to sign districts, we may still look at, and if there are any opportunities to reduce that number and shrink them, we will, because again, based on reducing complexity. But from my view and from discussing it with some other staff, a lot of those have been set up in pretty thoughtful ways in terms of where those areas are located and kind of what purpose they serve. So for example, the Class 5 District has some of our more intense retail type uses. So C2, C3, kind of the south towns, and where you're going to have freeway frontage and kind of more your big box or more intense commercial type activities. So it's not tied to any geographic reason or parcels themselves. What it's tied to is the underlying zoning district.
Very well. Any other questions for staff? Anything else needed from us?
I don't think so, no. We're going to take your feedback. We're going to do the same exercise with the council. We're going to put our heads together following that. And if we strongly disagree with you in any certain way, we'll make sure we make a compelling case as to why. But of course, honor your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. This was very, very creative. And I don't know, maybe just a, for our planning commissioners, any thoughts on how this clicker thing works or went? Would you like to see it again, Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks Chair. I think these were fun. And I know that as, as a commission, we're very, usually very expressive, and we can talk about things for a long time. And this was a very concise way to get our feedback. So I thought it was great. And then I also really appreciated the visuals that you provided. It helped me understand what you were saying. So I liked the presentation and I liked the clicker as well.
Thank you. And I would just want to thank Emily Hespect, the planning tech, who actually did a lot of the heavy lifting and horsepower behind this activity. So thank you, Emily.
Very well, thank you to staff.
You bet.
All right. We will then move on to item number four, which is the consideration of approving the draft meeting minutes from three different previous meetings. And I think we're going to have to take these one by one with our reduced amount of commissioners here this evening. And I will be leaning again on Mr. Markergard to remind us of how many people we need here. So we'll start with November 17th. Commissioners present at that meeting were Commissioner Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, Commissioner Abdi, myself, and Commissioner McGovern. So one, two, so three of the five at that meeting were present, are present here this evening, which is a quorum. So we could vote on that, Mr. Markergard, is that correct?
Chair Cookden, yeah, the rules of procedure talk about a majority of the members present at the meeting. As long as we have that, you can vote on, vote on the minutes.
All right, so we will start with November 17th, and I'll look for a motion from one of the present commissioners, Commissioner Goldsman.
I move to approve the draft synopsis for November 17th.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of approval of the November 17th draft synopsis for November 17th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. We will then move on to December 8th, and I've lost my Wi-Fi connection. Does anyone have the list of commissioners available? Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Available at that meeting were Paige Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, Nellie Corman, Commissioner Albrecht, Commissioner Abdi, myself, and Commissioner McGovern. So that was seven of us, and we have four here this evening, so we could vote on that one as well. So I will then look for a motion for the December 8th meeting. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you Chair, I move to approve the draft meeting synopsis from December 8th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second for the December 8th meeting approval. Any further discussion there? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. We will then move on to our final approval, which was the 22nd of December. And I really messed up on whatever Commissioner Albrecht had going there. But perhaps Mr. Markergard has it for us?
Yeah, Chair Cookden, we had five members present at that meeting, only two of which are here tonight. So we will need to revisit that at your next meeting.
Very well, do we need a motion of continuance?
In this case, I don't think we do. We can just, we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
All right, very well, that sounds great. That concludes item four, and we will move on to item five, which is the Planning Commission Policy and Issues Update. Mr. Markergard, do you have any updates for us?
Chair Cookden, and commissioners, our next scheduled meeting is January 26th. However, we did not receive any applications for that meeting, and there were no items continued tonight to that meeting. So we have a pretty big gap here until February 16th will be our next meeting. And we do have three items that were received yesterday for that agenda. One is a conditional use permit for a hockey training facility. The second item is a expansion of the Luther Hayundi car dealership. And the third item is a potential item. It's still not finalized whether it will be on the agenda, but it would be a study item, potentially discussing single-room occupancy standards, which is on your work plan for 2023. So that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. Any commissioners have any miscellaneous items they'd like to bring up this evening? Seeing none, that concludes our January 12th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Good night.